I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Dandels School District Board Directors. Remember November 6, 6 o'clock. My name is Clayton Cargill on the board chair for the record. We're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves around the room. I'll do board members in the room first. Right here is.
Tim Finberg.
Yeah, Molly Gleason Clark.
And.
Eric Yu.
And Dave, Dave Toll, please say hi for the record. Dave Zoomin and he's zooming over as well. May I be able to hear us? Please do eminently if you can't hear us. Dave Toll is here on Zoom also in transit to the building. In the building, we also have for the record administration.
Dave Toll.
You know, folks, it's gonna be a good night.
Superintendent. Yeah, Foster Superintendent.
Brandon Lawrence, Facilities Director.
Two Building Principals.
Sarah Waltz, Elementary Principal. Natalie Connery, Secondary Principal. Des Kurtz, Curriculum Director.
Awesome. And we also have.
Like a chat.
Okay, so. Everybody is here. Before I move forward, are there any additions or changes to this agenda that anybody has or would like me to consider?
Did we want to move the executive session north?
I'm free to move it as we need to. We may move that executive session. I need Dave here for that.
Right.
So before we talk. Keeping facilities related. Executive session. Regarding negotiations. So there may be just a brief moment where I need just a minute of your time on private. So that.
Clayton.
Yes, sir.
Clayton, the heading on the meeting says CCSU, not Danville.
Where?
On the Zoom?
Yes.
Mine. Says Danville.
Mine says Danville too.
Okay.
Yeah. I hope nobody's out there looking for us, but I clicked in, I clicked in from the link on the, on the agenda promoted.
And mine says Danville in the heading. I know school, the only thing it says is regular as opposed to special on it.
It might be just his email somewhere along the, probably says CCSU, maybe that's what's popping up on his own.
Yeah, it must be the link from the email then.
I think we're in the right room. Okay.
I'm.
So no additions or changes to the agenda, and we think we're in the right room. All right, moving on. Molly wrote the minutes for October 1st and submitted them as unapproved. Put them over. We have talked about them. See any questions about those minutes? Molly, just like to make a motion to have those minutes approved.
My own minutes?
You wrote them. They're your minutes. You're the clerk.
Sure, so moved.
Second.
Who else would have, I don't know why you can't. You wrote them. Quality minutes. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 1st. All in favor of approving the minutes from October 1st, please say aye.
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 Thanks, sir. My motion carries on that. We're going to move on past the minutes. And I have several different reports here. The first one we have is a superintendent report. Principals are here. Ready? You have anything relevant to tell us that you want to pull out of this?
There's, I don't think there's anything exciting or new that's already in the report for you.
All right, like other questions about the report from any board members, any members of the public? Would like to ask the superintendents?
It's in light of the, the survey. Principals how the updated phone policy is going this year. Seems to go smoothly, no problems. I know that this year we, you do unify all the policies, right?
Yes. Yeah, for high school, the survey data is in the report. You know, kids obviously report that they themselves are not distracted by phones.
That was amazing.
But their friends are, but not them. So that was interesting. But yeah, so, so far faculty, staff, students seem okay with the transition that we've made where in high school cell phones are away during class time and they can have them in transition and all of that. So I think going to anything more stringent is unnecessary at this time. And I think their understanding, I've met with each class as well, and their understanding of the spirit of the rule change being universal, is that like we're face to face and we want to be looking at each other. And the teachers are on board. I think that was the one thing, it said 71% of faculty and staff said they would support a full ban. So that's outside of the policies that are there. They would like them just not, just fully banned. Well, yeah, the number of faculty and staff who responded to the survey was very small. It was less than 10. Okay, so.
But there is then the pickle with that of the teacher still wants to be able to use theirs because they can do work on it. And so it's a work, it's a work device for a teacher and it's, yeah. Pick mine out of my pocket to do something in the middle of a meeting to see what, to look something up and I'm there, I'm playing on my phone. There's always the perception that somebody's playing on their phone that you could be working on.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a double standard that would have to be in place and then it becomes exclusionary.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, less is more and I think we're small enough and the, the student body, especially the middle schoolers coming into high school already have the expectation that phones are away and phones aren't with them. And so it hasn't been a leap for the ninth graders to. The only consideration is we might want to improve some, some tech at high school math. Because we're using iPhones and, and phones for calculators because Texas Instruments still has a string to hold in high school math and is not reduced their price in 20 years. So. Yeah, so you know, that's, that's just a consideration, but nothing insurmountable.
So that leads us into the principal's report. Max, fine.
I do have a quick, just, just a quick update on the strategic planning because it's changed a little bit since I wrote this. Just that we, we have 25 people confirmed for the, for a strategic design team meeting that comes up, coming right up here on, on November 20th. Across the street at Danville Town Hall. All of our schools are representative, all our communities are representative, represented. We're aiming for about 20% student representation. We have about 16% right now. So if you know, know any students.
I heard 16, I thought it was 16 students. That's what somebody said.
I thought it was 16.
Sorry.
And Tanika is gonna cater it for us. So pretty, they won't be tacos in case you're excited about it.
For those of you who didn't get a taco, there's tacos in the kitchen, but you can't have one.
It's actually gonna be the school that's actually doing it and will be able to keep money in house for it. So it's nice.
Who's representing Danville? Is that confirmed?
I do, yep. Um, let's see. We have one teacher, James Hughes, and two parents slash guardians. Polly Jankus and Clayton Carr.
Somebody said three hour meeting. I said, that's.
Everyone, we talked about the, if you're good hang or not, you know.
I'll participate. I said with Polly, I didn't know Polly was coming. That's, that's good. All right, so anything else on the superintendent's report? We tell me with the honor roll. Whose idea was that? I like it. Yeah. Lean on my children.
I don't remember whose idea that was. We talk about a lot of things in staff meeting. So, yeah, I, I think I asked last year why we didn't have it and I didn't get a good answer. So we're bringing it back this year. So middle school has principals list and high school is going to have honor roll. Middle school runs on quarters. Kind of. So really we report out progress twice a year. So we're a semester, but they change essential arcs on the quarter. And so it's a natural time for us to do that at middle school and then high school is per semester. So we have high honors and honor roll. Moving forward and already worked with Scott to get that set up in Power School. So we'll kind of do a test run of final grades before final exams, make sure things are kind of working as they should and really excited about that. I, I think a lot of students are excited to be celebrating after their academic achievement.
Question? Um, is the honor roll going to be published in the newspaper like it had been in the past?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful.
I mean, unless they tell me no.
Maybe you can send it, we could post it on, on the site too.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting question. And I think that on your report, we'll leave off the gym items for the agenda item and talk about retiring item.
The retiring stuff, okay.
Any questions, any further questions for the principals on the principal's report? I want substitutes. Are we doing online?
So Kathy just told me this week that she's had four new substitutes show up out of the blue. So I don't, there's two people in elementary today that this was the first time I've ever seen that. So. I mean, yay. Yeah, so I, she's, she's like literally, other than we've advertised a lot. Doesn't know where they came from, but they came. They were here.
And the job this year, open position, student behavior support interventionist, that is filled?
That just got filled, contract just got signed.
I learned that, I learned that in the kitchen.
Yes, so that'll, now that a contract's been signed, that will be shared with staff tomorrow.
You know, all right. So with that, we'll move on. A lot of your stuff, your facilities update is next, but a lot of your stuff is going to come down later. Anything specific you want to tell us? About the facility that doesn't involve us needing to spend money?
Yeah, not really, besides the, the, the things that are kind of problematic right now. Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess the, the gym floor update, I had Vince.
Really good news.
The gym floor update. Yeah, so I had, I know, I was getting all sorts of mixed information over what, what it needed, what it could be, whatever. So I met with Vince from New England Sports Floors. Worked with him for a few years at Twinfield when I was there. He came out and pretty much said that the gym floor is still in decent enough shape and it, you know, still has some longevity left in it. It just needs the annual, this year will just be the annual recall. Just to keep it, you know, get it ready for basketball season. And just like down the road, we got, like, we'll talk about what we want as far as, like Randy, I talked with them as far as game lines and logos and painting and but it was, I was under the impression it was like done for. No more standing.
Yeah, we've been, we've been told that by the previous facilities director. So. And a couple of principals ago as well. So, yeah, so I thought that was the case.
Yeah, so he, that was all pretty much good. We'll look at possibly replacing the volleyball holders because those are in kind of rough shape. I think that would be a next year thing when, when I was talking to Randy about doing new, redoing some painting in there and then possibly changing the center logo to a bear instead of a D. It's kind of like just what you guys want, what just the town.
What the town wants. Anything else for now?
I'm really, besides anybody.
I have a lot of questions for running in later. So the first thing that we have is, on the board business is a continuous improvement data presentation and actual 39 summary from this. Came on late, I turned the floor of this.
So Matt's getting that ready. I'll just quickly review. I think most of you were here in September. When we talked about data, September meeting, correct? I'm asking that rhetorically and I think at that point I kind of shared briefly the continuous improvement plan process. So just to recap and I'll summarize it quickly. Annually, there's a, there are two continuous improved, at least two continuous improvement goals that are developed by the leadership team using data from across the SU schools. One of the goals needs to be an academic achievement goal and the other is safe and healthy school. So this was the goals that you're seeing. You can transfer to the next slide, please. Were developed last spring in a collaborative process with the leadership team, all the principals and central office staff. I'm using data. So. You will, this is the academic achievement goal in two parts and tonight you'll see the data that reports out proficiency towards the standard. We will not see the data that shows growth because we need two points of data in a year to be able to show that growth. So in the winter, after the second window, Matt's asking me to come back to each board and just show that piece of the data as well. No questions about that? All right, so moving on to the next slide. You will see that there's celebrations to be had at Danville School. So what you're looking at here is kind of comparing apples and oranges because fall 2023. It's just kind of like a benchmark, if you will, to look at fall 2024. So. These are different cohorts of kids. So you can't really compare them, but you can see where Dandl kids were in fall 2023. The teal color is at or above the benchmark for proficiency. According to this measure, which is the STAR assessment, which we use to screen students and then progress monitor throughout the year. So in the fall, how this works from behind the scenes and Sarah and Emily Judd, please, attention. Is, thanks. The, this assessment is administered and teachers and teams of teachers would look at this data and see the screener, who's, who's meeting the benchmarks, who, which students are on watch, which means almost meeting the benchmark. Which students look like they might need some intervention and more urgent intervention. The next phase in our local common assessment system and within the multi-tiered systems of support that we use in our schools would be to do some more diagnostic assessment of those kiddos and see what their next steps might be for instruction. So, back to the celebration. Need to keep on that side, Matt. You can see that this year at Danville School, and this is measuring data for just grades three through eight, because that's what our goal was measuring. 38.3% of the students are meeting proficiency and reading and 26.6 in, are on watch there. So that's an improvement from last fall in both of those categories. And you can also see a decrease in that urgent intervention. So the question that I, you know, that we always kind of pose is what do you notice? What do you wonder? And what are your theories? So there could be lots of theories that teachers would look at to see like, why are the ships? What's going on here? Is it instruction? Is it materials? Is it? Lots of different factors. Dig deeper. Okay, so that's reading. Any questions about reading?
So just on this assessment, so this is, this is 35% that are below the standard. Is in the bottom two numbers.
Yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Yes, that, I guess you could say that's a fair assessment of that assessment.
The urgent needs, the urgent needs, we have IEPs for that sort of a thing, but.
Exactly, Clayton. Yeah, those would be students who are receiving what we call like more tier three supports at that level.
Is this benchmark the same as will be done in like the spring? I, so like we would only expect very few kids to actually be proficient at the beginning of the year, but we expect to grow so that we have everybody over the line. Yeah, the year is this.
Um, you'll, what you would expect to see and maybe the graph that we can look at in the winter and the spring is maybe it'll look a little different. But what you would expect to see, yes, is each student making like a year's worth of growth. And there's a measurement for that in STAR. It's like a 35% increase over time. So you might not see all of these students go to the green, but you're seeing those students making a year's worth of growth based on their instruction. Does that answer your question?
So this benchmark is the same benchmark that's used in the spring?
Yes.
Okay.
And I may even want to clarify a little bit different, more is that there's some that you'd say, okay, beginning of third grade, here's the level of text we'd expect the kids to be at. And then winter time, that text level goes a little bit higher.
The assessment. Yep, it's a, it's adaptable.
Right, so you're still looking at proficiency at the level at their age.
And it's adaptable in the moment.
Right, if they, if they do poorly on a question, the tough.
So that's why we have, this is a screener and progress monitor.
Right.
And then we also have, like the data you showed me today, our VT cap summative data, which is the end of the year measuring to the standard. Like this is where all fourth graders should be at the end of the year.
Yeah.
How many of your kids were proficient to the standard for that end of the year, fourth grade? How many?
Right.
Does that make sense?
That's something they're gonna tell us about in the next month. That's the conversation that YouTube are having.
Well, I was just showing like an example of the graph. It was, I had, I had access to that data.
That's not data that's in front of us right now. So that's, that's what I want to clarify. That's not in your data for tonight. That's something you can bring to the future.
Exactly, this is just.
We're ready for it.
You're ready for one? Yeah, okay.
And how, I mean, we've talked about the, the state assessment and that was, I think what's hard is that goes home to families. And that is very different than this. What we're seeing for district and, yes, new levels. So I don't know how we navigate that with what information is going home to families and that.
It's a great question.
It's a great question.
Nobody's reading the minutes. We know that.
We're working towards, and Sarah and Emily, again, jump in. What we're working towards in the SU and, and every school in a Danville is creating a really comprehensive picture of students. I like to call it like evidence of learning, right? So we know that at, at the end of how old is your son?
Close.
At the end of second grade, your son will know and understand, be able to do these things. And all of the evidence that we're collecting to show that will be a, a nice like array of, of evidence of learning and data. So that summit of assessment, this is assessment data. There's classroom curricular assessments that are happening. The educator talks for that as like formative and we're diagnostic assessments and curriculum assessments. And then how that's communicated to parents is, is something I think that happens in the classroom at the school level.
Yeah, and I think that, I think the cap is really trippy too, because what we sent home to you guys as parents is not what we can see as a school. I can't see without touching every single child.
You get more information than about, about your student and then we do as an aggregate about the students.
Yeah.
It's really, it's actually not, we're giving a lot of feedback to stay on that.
Yeah, so like I can't see like, oh hey, fourth grade really struggled in this area of math and I, yeah.
The VT cap is still relatively new and they're still working out a lot of bugs and they're working out a lot of bugs with the technology as well. Well, Sback was around longer. Yeah, so and, and it had a much larger pool of people working on the questions.
Yes.
Because they were, it was a collaborative that was taken from different states and certain states would take different questions, whereas this is very much a, an in-state test. And it's, it's, it's getting better, but it is also not necessarily a, a good way to paint a picture of a student and their learning.
And that's why you need the right.
Right, and that's really the problem too with that being communicated home because that just goes home. And like, sure, you could, you could send home STAR data every time they take the STAR assessment. But there are going to be parents who are going, ah, another one of these, you know, and, and for them to also know that it's like, it's not, okay, they took the test. They took the same test and they're getting the same score all the way across. It's, the test is evolving with them. There's a lot of learning that would have to go with it.
Right, and then looking at where they're at at the end of the school year, we would hope is better than here. And there's also, you know, the piece of what we call a summer slide where kids, many kids slide back a little bit. They've got to reaccustomed and readjust to school and so.
So that would be in the fall.
That's what we see, right?
Yeah.
And then we look at it in the spring, it'll look it looks differently. And I explained to a parent last week that, that another concern that I have with the state test is that it's given and there's given and there's still a third of the year left.
Yeah.
I, because they moved it up so much this year. So there's so much curriculum that hasn't been taught and yet they are expected to know it.
It's like called the summer phenomenon. I mean, how many kids are actually reading and writing, doing mathematics and all the things that the test is trying to help figure out to take the summer off? That's the worst thing to do is do it like first month back at school. You're like.
Well, this is when we're talking, this would be the end of the year one where they're, the problem that Sarah was pointing out is the end of the year test is not really taking place at the end of the year where it's supposed to measure all the learning that's taking place. They've kind of carved it back to like March-ish.
But we do need to.
For the June standard.
You've got.
But it is important to, to do a screener at the beginning of the year regardless of the summer slide so that teachers have a place to start.
Absolutely.
Right, because you get a lot of information for what kids need when you start in the fall. And we have, we have pushed back in our, our local common assessment system has we start about six weeks in, less than that, about five weeks into the school year. So there is an opportunity, especially for the younger grades, for teachers to develop relationship routines before they're just immediately assessing. Okay, we ready to move on to math?
Well, I guess, just as a question with the goal, so you said, you know, we want 75% of students to be proficient in spring 2026. You're essentially just over halfway there. Yeah, so there's, so you need to get 36 kids, essentially 35 kids. Do the math right.
Ambitious.
Into proficiency.
It's an ambitious goal.
Yeah, from here, yeah. Is it, is it an overly ambitious goal or?
This is what, so we just had a meeting this week in our leadership team and we'll be reviewing these goals several times throughout the year. And so we've looked at how are we dealing with this goal? What are, and, and part of the, part of the continuous improvement plan, it's, it's pretty, it's on the website. It's an intense document. So there's strategies and measures and steps that are kind of adjacent to these bigger goals. And so what we looked at was this is a first pass. So we had a discussion of like, what are we doing well? What might our next steps need to be? What do we need to shift in this goal and and revise? So it's a good question that you're asking, Eric. And it's exactly the kind of work that we do in leadership team and looking at this continuous improvement plan.
I think one of the struggles that leadership team had is they hadn't had a, a data previously to kind of give you some little information to be able to kind of make a more appropriate goal maybe. But as we do this over a period of time, we'll be able to have a better understanding, I think.
And I think the conversation, and back me up if I'm wrong too, from last spring was there was a strong feeling to keep the goal ambitious and to keep it rigorous and.
So is there, is there any consideration of putting in a goal to, to talk about getting the, the kids in the maroon up into the red?
You're asking a good question.
Absolutely.
Because rather than the goal of getting everybody to the green is greater 70% of the green. Can we get more kids out?
Yes, and so Clayton, the second part of the goal is, so when, when you're looking, thinking about proficiency, right? You're thinking about working towards a, a standard, right? Like you're proficient at this skill. And then the second part, which is what the federal standards ask us to do is to show growth, like a year's worth of growth over time. So the second part of that goal is students will make a year's worth of growth. It was also a big part of the discussion that we really wanted to have both of those things, not just one year's worth of growth, but the proficiency is here and you're way down here and a year's worth of growth is at 35% growth and you're just moving here for a long, it's gonna, you know, we want to.
Never hit the target.
Right, and we want to be able to hit that target faster and increase that rate. And I, I will just say one more thing before we move on because I could talk about this for a long time, but I know you have a lot to talk about tonight. It is. And keep the questions coming. The another really big emphasis in our, in our schools this year and at Danville is to refine those collaborative conversations that happen between teachers around centering data. So here's how these kids are doing. I'm going to talk to you and, and Mike, you're my colleagues. Here's, I'm going to present. Here's, I'm going to present this, this work that these kids have done. And I need your help to think about next steps and strategies to move these kids forward. And so we're having these conversations that we're calling team talk conversations that lead into the educational support team conversations that happen when kids are referred to EST. So that we're looking at, at those students that need the extra supports in a really strategic way so that we can move the needle. And see more growth and proficiency.
Yeah. The nice thing about these assessments is it's trying to reduce the opportunity for a kid to be lost to the cracks, right? So we can identify what students are doing well, what students are doing pretty well, and what students really can use some help. In those conversations, those team meetings that principals and their staff hold so they can be able to provide whatever, you know, differentiate the instruction, help provide whatever it is they need. And sometimes they find out that they may have more needs than what they're able to provide. So then we really have to start problem solving, or maybe we have to have that come up in budget discussions and things of that nature. So that, that data helps us construct those decisions.
I'm ready. We will get the same assessment and the same, excuse me, to, to your tables there for math. A slight increase in percentage points in students who are meeting or above this year. And that same pattern of, um, decrease in urgent intervention students, a little bit of an increase in students who need intervention. So same process, this data is screening data. You're going to dig deeper into what's going on with the kids in those groups. And some theories that come forth too is, and I was just like, wait, I'm really not seeing that this kid who's in that orange kind of right below the proficiency bar. All the classroom work that the student is doing is spot on. So I'm going to do another small assessment and see if that kind of triangulates the next time they take the assessment. So usually, you know, it's a one-time assessment if you keep that in context. So the next couple of slides are placeholders for what we, we will look at student growth in the winter. So then the second goal for our continuous improvement plan is our safe and healthy schools. And this was developed the same processes last year and we, um, so I basically kind of do what I call a data sweep and look for any evidence, um, or any kind of quantitative and qualitative data that we can bring to the table leadership team. I will say this was challenging with this goal last year, um, in developing the goal because we have a whole lot of data to show us, um, how kids were doing socially and emotionally at school. So we're working on that. The data that we brought forward was attendance data. So that was daily attendance rate, which we'll see in a second. And there, um, what's called Swiss or data and Swiss is the platform where behavior data is collected. So we have major data and minor data and we chose to look at major data. So those like the big behaviors across the SU.
What's an example of like a major?
A major would be, um, bullying harassment, it would be a fight, weapons. But it's also like a big physical aggression. So not necessarily all the way up to a fight, but more than just like So they're going to be the things that are, um,
Were breaches.
More, uh, yeah, and more, um, the teachers are passing on for somebody else to address, um, right there outside of the classrooms of student support or an alley, right?
So then what is your standard for, um, you talked, you know, in the last meeting about sometimes a kid just needs a minute? Does that come with a referral point? Does that come with documentation or is that just get a minute? Not documenting everything now?
Yeah.
You're documenting all those things so that there's.
Yeah.
And, um, we also looked at youth risk behavior survey, um, which was in twenty twenty-one. So it's kind of old data and that was more, it was more difficult to kind of process. But so we landed on these two pieces of data we could track over time. And this is what we came up with. In our more recent review, it really became clear that we we need more different data potentially to look at to really tweak that goal, like you were saying, Eric, that could we revise this? So we're thinking about that a lot in leadership team.
What are your interventions? Like what, what are we doing differently?
What are our strategies?
Yeah.
So one of them was, um, to, pardon me. Choose a screener to use with students several times throughout the year to be able to collect data around how they're, how they're feeling about school and how they're feeling themselves socially, emotionally. And there was a group last year that, that did that work. Another one of the strategies was to hire an NTSS coordinator and project aware grant coordinator.
Yeah.
Who, um, which we did. Um, and that person, Martha De Niers, is digging into all the systems and all the data that we have in the SU and, and starting to kind of think, what do we need to do here? This felt like a real starter call.
Yeah.
I'll be honest. I think it was kind of like a, well, okay, well, we could look at these two pieces of data from across the SU.
Impossible because it's like this year, uh, there's a million of these that's sweeping through the schools and it's like.
And also you'll see in a moment, our attendance, luckily, we don't seem to have an issue with that really in CCSU. So it's kind of like, should this be our goal?
It's a nice outlier for us right now.
It's a nice outlier and we can keep an eye on it, but it's not something that we necessarily need to focus on.
And then I would say, um, at the school level, our focus on mental health support and continuing to increase um, and have that support. For example, when Melinda hired, was retired, it was a non-negotiable for us to fill that position because of the level of social emotional support that that provides for our kids. And so making sure that we're really at the ground level here at Danville, supporting our kids from a mental health student.
Are there criteria if there's a student that really does need more therapeutic support and should go elsewhere? Is there a certain process for identifying those kids that may not, may not actually benefit as much as they could from the services we offer versus a more therapeutic environment? Is there like a different school placement?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So that's, yeah, as part of the MTSS process, it's part of the IEP team decisions. Oftentimes, um, students who are displaying levels of needs at that degree usually are already identified as having a special need. And so that just goes through the, the IEP team process. We're really lucky to have, um, a school-based clinician three days a week. And so we're able to refer kids to see her. So we have three guidance counselors, elementary, middle grades and high school. But beyond them, we have, um, a school-based clinician three days a week who can work with kids, which is a tremendous gift because to have that in school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's also things like coordinated service plans where
Yeah.
Their meeting of counselors, tied in with any KHS, whatever, you know, so.
We try to wrap around as much as we can and then partnering with NKHS or.
So the data you see here is really kind of ten thousand foot view. So it's just the raw numbers of the majors that were recorded in the Swiss platform. Um, blue is last year and gold is this year. And again, thinking about our goal being like five percentage points less based on some of the strategies I mentioned, including what these folks just talked about. Um, and the cool thing about Swiss is you can really dig, again, dig deeper into the data to look at like who are the P C F Rs, who are the kids that are, you know, the higher flyers? When it's happening, where it's happening, the time of day, location, response to the inter, uh, to the, um, behavior and if that's working or not. And this is also part of that team talk and EST process that I was discussing. So it might be that naturally just, you know, every day at lunch, right before lunch, she's flying off the handle. What are we going to do to be able to prevent that from happening? What are some strategies? So that's that data. And then the attendance data isn't super pretty to look at and, but this was last year. So, um, the brown is the time that attendance was recorded. And I have a question about this actually, because it's some of the green is at higher than the time the attendance was reported. So this, this graph isn't. Yeah. So it might not be super accurate. I'll be completely honest.
This is really hard in middle and high school level when kids are missing classes. Yeah.
So again, I, I know we can clearly transparent with the board. I because we're really talking about shifting this goal, I wasn't going to get too nitty gritty about correcting that, that graph because this might not, I want to come back a little bit to the goal that I shifted. So you can see then for this year on that final slide, um, just that attendance for August, September, October. Conversation. I appreciate your questions.
This is one more data question. I'm so sorry. So we're doing significantly better in math than in reading, arithmetic is than reading. Want to do the three hours. Uh, I was wondering if we're attributing that mostly to the fact that we had, um, standardized the curriculum in math many years ago and reading, we've just sort of done that this year. Is that? Do you feel like that has an impact on that or, or?
It's a theory.
Am I completely off base on that?
We, I mean, we've had the same K A curriculum for four years. Yeah. So I do think that definitely helps. And then standardized our writing curriculum for a while now, but reading, um, until this year has been all over the place. And so phonics has been better, which I think is part of why, like, we're seeing some of those scores go up. But that's a big piece of working to have.
So it's a theory.
It's going to take several years before you can.
I don't know if you ever tested, but it was just.
No, I know, but I mean, like.
This data is also hard because you have new third graders and you lost any grade group. So some of it is, might be based simply on the scale level of disability and so within those groups. Might have impacted that type of, right? So that's why it's, it'll be better once we have more.
Um, I did say I would also talk about Act One Thirty-Nine, but I'm not going to. I did link in the, and, and please, I know, I'm just being conscious of time. Unless you have specific questions, there's a link to a informational document that Mike and I put together. And it kind of outlines the specifics of the legislation. Matt walked into my office this afternoon. I just got off the phone with Emily Lash from the AOE, who, uh, was giving me a little bit more detail about the rollout of Act One Thirty-Nine. So stay tuned. One of the things to take away is you'll get more information about your child's
And Matt, thank you for listening. As we've been saying, I'm not going to board this is my third term. My first week I started, I was talking about this kind of data. So I appreciate that you got right on it. He does too.
We got good people.
Yeah, it's good to see.
Building the systems.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, have a good night.
I lost my papers.
I tell the secrets later.
I can't. So we're going to go next to FY twenty-six. Thank you, Des. FY twenty-six budget discussion, but I'd like to move just briefly forward, um, the status of su- support staff negotiations just for a second. Uh, in an executive session, just to tell you one thing very quickly, but I can't tell you outside of an executive session. And I'd like to do that specifically, uh, for one BSA three thirteen, A one B, not A one A, what's said, just said here. An ongoing negotiation. And to do that, I would need for, um, Brandon and Katie and two principals to just excuse us for a second. But I need a motion to do.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to go into a quick executive session here at six forty-five, six four six.
Transparency. My wife has worked here for twenty-four years and I'll abstain from any vote.
Yeah, it's purely informational. I'm going to keep it up on the level. So am I in the executive session at six forty-six? To come out of executive session at six.
Yeah.
I resumed.
All right. A second to come out of executive session at six fifteen. All right. All right. All in favor coming out of executive session at six fifteen? Right. And we're coming out of executive session. The board takes no action. Those are secrets. Sorry, folks. Secret, secret, secret business.
Did you say secret, secrets are no fun?
We are now recording and we're going to move on now to the FY twenty-six budget. And, um, and so I'm going to go and turn it over to Mike, this I see, and let him walk us through some of the things that are driving what was going on. I hope we can get that screen back, sure. Oh, I was on the wrong, I was chasing something. Sorry. It's my, my fault.
A lot of all bringing party favors and streamers about this year's budget compared to last year. And I say that with all seriousness because last year, I think I brought you guys a nine point something percent increase. It was just brutal. There were a lot of things working against us. And, um, but this year I'm, I'm happy to, now before we get into any details, that we're sub three, two point six, which is well below the inflation. So I'm feeling really good about this, but I'll, I'll explain how we get there. There's a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Both at the SU level and the two principals here to my right. And so I, I really, I want to talk about what I presented. So hopefully you've had a chance to at least review this, but if you haven't, we'll try to go through it. Kind of a quick recap. The first few pages give you by function and by object code, all the different costs. And I put this here and try to put like a comment section over to the right. Just in case you guys have questions about different things, I wanted to be able to kind of like address it right off the bat. If I may, because there's a lot of areas I want to cover. We can come back to this minutia. What I want to do is drop to the, about page five and it's, it's kind of like the, the roll up and we'll have Vipro right there. Yes. This here is just, I'm trying to explain without going through every functional object code on this first four or five pages. Say, listen, what are the drivers? Why are we up two point six percent or two hundred and eighteen thousand rounded? We're going to have the four major categories. One is the CBA increases, right? Teachers and support staff. That's the lion's share. We know the benefits are up, but benefits are actually better than they were when I first modeled this, just for the record. Uh, last week I, I actually went in and made adjustments. I modeled twenty, came in at twelve. So I was doing jumping jacks on that one. That was great. So that's only forty-seven thousand. SU assessments are up thirty-three thousand. That's actually remarkably good compared to last year. Um, and actually, um, it's all different in the food service. So all the other assessments net to zero basically, and we'll get to that assessment page if you haven't looked already. But it, of that thirty-two thousand, it's almost all food service. Um, and that's just the reality that, that food service number includes wage increases, healthcare increases. Do I need to talk about going to the grocery store? All right. And repairs. So just keep going. And lastly, the last big chunk of it is really not that big. It's a pre-K tuition is up, um, because of, uh, I think it's called Act Forty-Six.
No, I'm going to stick to something else.
You know, it's, universal pre-K.
So why is that up? Because of universal pre-K?
Yeah, people have the option and they're using it. They're using that, that ability.
Well, I mean, this is more students is what it is.
No, it means we, so if, if you work, if you work in a location uh, and you want your, your child, your pre-K student to attend that location. And let's say you, you're a Danville resident, of course, it has to be Danville resident, and they work, and they give this up and teach them. They can have their kids, uh, attend, uh, teach them pre-K.
The ten hour thing.
Yes. And that's what that is.
Oh, that's the amount of.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's, yeah, for.
Four students. No, no, it's. No, no, it's four, because it's it's only about four thousand for student, that's the maximum amount that each district is on the hook for for each child. That takes advantage of this new act that that that.
How many are we drawing, yeah?
No, no, this this pre K revenue, we can get there when it's the revenue slide, okay, that's a good question, but we'll get to it, yeah. So I'm just trying to get, that's.
Fifty six, sixty, sixty six.
I was only off by one number, that's not bad, I said boys.
Act one sixty.
That was the fourth merger, don't ever bring that up again, sorry, that's a really a bad one. Sorry, so that explains, that explains ninety seven or whatever percent here, I I figured you guys would be happy with the ninety seven percent increase, the other one's just. It's a mixed bag of inflation and pressures across the board, now, part of this. Otherwise, this number would be much higher, is that we are down three F T Es and I'm, if you can see it. What it's saying is the three F T's that we're not gonna backfill in twenty six, I mean, I can let obviously Natalie or Sarah talk about, but please.
We have one high school all program instructor position that we are not. Filling and so we're going to let that position go, a career tech assistant position, which was a one point oh para position. And then there's actually a life skills para position, that was kind of a.
Fourth student support position.
Yeah.
At one point, we had contracted with Washington County. For an in-house. They call it in-house P B I S support person, and then when that person left, we localized it. And then we decided that we need three, we didn't need four.
And these jobs are not currently filled.
Pardon, those two are those Denville works or I mean, you're not calling it Denville works anymore, right?
Is that true?
Correct, it doesn't. No more Denville works program.
But but these decisions providing the relief, otherwise that two seventeen would probably, if I had a guess, probably both sort of force up.
Yeah.
So this is all good, good stuff.
Yeah.
Now, now I know two, two seventeen, two point six percent, yeah, it's, I'm not making light, that's not a big increase. However, I have some creative ideas, I took the liberty of doing, you don't have to decide tonight whether or not you agree with my. My my creative idea or not, you can just wait till the tax rates, all the information comes out, we'll see what the tax rates are. And you'd be like, Mike, that's a great idea, good forward thinking, oh, Mike, we're not doing that, right? So.
Go forward or backward, it's like.
Yeah, could we just go, if you don't mind, could we go to slide six, page six, it's, I just want to recap the S U assessment, because we just barely talked about it. Remember I mentioned that the S U assessments are up thirty three thousand, you can see that it's 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 basically the food service. That I had mentioned, I just wanted you guys to see the detail, but I mean essentially we're flat. Year over year, actually the last three years, it's it's remarkable, really. And this, this is good news to share, and that's why I wanted to just go do it real quick. So, alright, and then if you don't mind, could we go to slide seven, the last one? And I want to do this before we go to revenue, because I want to show people, so there are the drivers, there are the F T E that were not backfilling. Great, now you can see, these are surpluses based on fund. And I want to bring this to your attention, because this is gonna feed into my my suggestion that we're gonna talk about in a few seconds. Local fund, which I know you guys have lots of plans for, especially the facility side, so Brandon is probably gonna be telling us. Soon, or the board will be telling us the direction they want to go with certain things, that's great. I'm asking right now, I want a mental note, I want you to carve out a hundred and fifty, one fifty, and we'll get back to why that one fifty is important. You'd still have a half a million in in Fund One, you got twenty seven thousand in Fund Three, which is capital fund. Forty three thousand for mission and reserve, and remember we drew down on the special education reserve, I think it was last year or the year before, two years ago, sorry, thank you. Okay, so now, with that, I just want everyone to see that, now we can go to the revenue slide, which is slide five. This is, if you just maybe shrink it just, yes, perfect, alright. You see that carry forward your fund balance under the local five nine nine, it it was one eighty in the budget. We use it, that was that that was two years ago, you're right, budget twenty four, that was the special ed reserve. I'm suggesting we use one fifty from the local unrestricted fund, okay, no, no set. And you're like, well, Mike, why are you making that recommendation? Well, we're only up two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, right, from year to year. We're making up sixty something thousand of it, because tuition's up. Based on tuition rate, and I think we have an extra student or two, depending upon how I modeled it, I can't remember, I think I did thirty kids at twenty three thousand. Interest is up, why? Because we're managing the money really well, Phyllis Sweeney is an absolute superstar. Every time I need her, Johnny on the phone, wouldn't be Johnny, would be Joanna on the spot. Expression, anyway, stupid one, the point is, we're able to really maximize and hoard the working capital in the investment account. To maximize interest income and return, now, one fifty is an important number, because if we were to use that. I want you to go to the education funding payment line thirty one ten, right there, you're right in the middle of the page, you see how last year? Seventy five, ninety five, rounded, and if we use one fifty of the under surplus, we'll only need seventy five. Ninety eight rounding, which is only an increase of three thousand, now, why is that important? Because the state's asking every district if it's possible. To minimize Ed fund needs, so we're flat, this is flat. It's on you, you're the only district that has this. You're the only one that could literally show a flat Ed fund year over year. That that basically means, what I'm trying to get to is, the the way this new, what is it called, what act is another act, it's come out, one twenty seven, is it? What's the new one that's?
Special, special.
No, 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 it's the one that we're now, I I have to present the budgets. One seventy three. Somebody acts, I can't remember the ball.
In Illinois, we don't have these act issues, I mean, it's like, I didn't have to come up with, it's like, federal's gonna roll, it's special ed law, I got that, you know, I'll be.
Yeah.
Here in Vermont, every year, we add to it, it's like, kidding me.
So I have to display tax calculations differently this year, that's why I'm not showing any tax counts right now, I have to build the template to allow that. But basically, they're doing, I think, I call it funny math, because the state doesn't want to be held responsible for the angry citizens. When they look at their C L A, because all weekend control is pre C L A stuff, right? So they're doing this funny math stuff, so that like, you bring C L A in pre, pre-tax and post-tax. So nobody gets angry that the real estate prices around them are all going up and that their tax rate's gonna go up as, this is just so stupid, right? But that's fine, we're gonna, it's exactly where it is, it's a shell game, but I have to present it that way. So what I'm trying to do is get ahead of this for you guys, to be like, if we show flat Ed fund. Year over year, and you're the only district that that we serve right now that has this option, has this opportunity, this is gonna be remarkable. Because if if that pre-post C L A funny math thing, it it it's not gonna affect the tax rate, so the tax rate's gonna be the tax rate. And I mean, the only thing that's gonna affect it right now is potentially the yield rate, which I can't tell you what it's gonna be until the letter comes up.
So just real quick, the V S B A will soon have some information on how that new tax rate is presented. And one of the things, when he says that we bring it forward, it factors in the calculation earlier, and there is a, they they've complicated the formula of factoring it. The local C, the local C L A times the statewide C L A divided then back by the local C L A. To give you a number so that it seems like the C L A is not affecting you as much, but it's affecting you just the same. But it's not an outlier to such degree, so when when the V S B A sends that out, they, we asked for it at the, at the last conference, as much detail as they give us, because they were also still confused.
If you look at the formula, it's clearly just more five C L A divided by C L A.
And it's the same thing, and it really is just, they just moved it in the, in where it is so that you can't point to it and say, see this? We can't do anything about, but but it's still, that thing can't be bought.
They multiply it by one, that was it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering the Ed payments, so if we were to have students leave Denville, how much would that impact? I mean, that's, that's, I wonder about. The eighth grade class now, if a large amount of students leave.
Yep.
That Ed payment, we would need some sort of cushion to absorb that loss from the Ed payment, correct?
Yeah, so just so you know, like, my model, the tuition number in it, that twenty three thousand times thirty kids. I I I kind of know some of the kids that you're referring to, those eighth graders that may not.
Denville residents, if they leave. That goes into our per pupil waiting formula of the state, so that, I guess I'm concerned that we don't have that number and. I have heard rumors and I think getting an estimate might be helpful, so we're not surprised.
That that won't go into the equation for two years, because it's a two-year long-term weighted average for.
Oh, right, that's right, so that would kick in.
So all good, all good points regardless, good questions, but the point I'm making here is, I don't have any tax rate information to give you. I'm just saying, what would it take to show flat Ed fund, and I'm saying it'd be a small portion of your unrestricted surplus. I just want you to noodle on it until December first comes up. And then you guys can decide what you want to do, I've got no skin in this game, I'm just making suggestions, and I live here, I don't know how many kids I go in.
And then the question becomes, if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you were gonna spend it, how many cents are you gonna be saving, we don't know that yet.
We don't, I'm gonna guess it's about three cents though.
But, so it's about three cents, and does it make more sense to say to people, we cut three jobs, this is your tax rate, we're trying to keep it flat. And we saved you three cents, or does it make sense to, as we'll find out later, fix the heating system?
Can I, can I interrupt you, because more jobs than that have been cut, because there's also been four.
Four other positions in the building.
Sorry, if you go to the assessment page, you talked about we're down, she's seven point seven to be exact, because if you go to the assessment page, it's clearly, I wrote it down. Four point seven F T Es as special educational.
So it's seven.
Seven point seven to be exact.
So I will, I, I will tell you that, right over there, these ladies are gonna say, th- those are our subs. Those are the people that when we shuffle the building around, and we figure out who's gonna take our special needs kids every day, you shuffle the building around, if there are four less of them. Who's gonna cover in for the teachers so that you don't have to try to find people off the street to teach your classes? Cutting four people from this building is going to be nightmarish, try to deal with. But that assessment came, that that business doesn't come from us, that's that that's the director that's coming out from the state, through the superintendent's office, into the C C S U budget. Those four jobs are gone, so, we're we're gonna be cutting these seven jobs, and then I would anticipate that it's gonna be a lot more difficult to staff.
When I think, if we do think about the three-year average, if we think three years out, and we think about our building needs, the financial sustainability piece of. Can we make, this, if this is our bare minimum absolute, again, I mentioned this before, how do we build in the facility piece? Without having taxes skyrocket, I think that's, and that really the fund, this fund is great, the unrestricted fund, but it's not five percent of our budget. You know, I think, once we start cutting down on that, this isn't like a huge reserve fund that we have, in terms of the needs of this building and what's kind of best, best practice in general. You know, it's not huge.
I I want to add one thing, the the word we got the last, I think it was the V S A conference, we were in, is it Lake Morin? They're gonna address that, the state is coming out with policy about what percentage of unrestricted surplus, you're even.
I Googled that today, because I wondered.
It's a good question, so here's the point, I say use it or lose it, because that's what's gonna happen, it's gonna force districts to make use of those funds. In a way that's with its capital infrastructure, whether it's something like this, you you just can't keep keeping it rolling it over year over year, they're gonna restrict what you.
No guidelines around it, and I mean.
Well, they're they're coming up with it as we speak, so I'm I'm more, I'm trying to get ahead of it, that we don't want to show lots of surplus, right, at the end of this year.
Yeah.
I think this is, I think this is, this is how you spend it, and how low do you want that number to go, and how how comfortable are you with the condition of this building, having less than what amount?
I first, I personally think we're we're at the point, I would hate to cut programs, but we've got to prioritize the building, and that's where I'm at with it, I.
Well, I mean, when we, when I look at this and I talk to him today, I I don't, I don't understand why you would spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars lowering the tax rate. Just to, just to prove a point, when you need to fix your heating system to save money.
I know, I appreciate that though, because people are gonna see, they're gonna look at this, and they're gonna say, this isn't level funded. We were screaming last year and you didn't listen, and it's not level funded this year, so that's kind of how I I see that going, so I appreciate that.
So it's one idea.
Yeah, so let's go, so then let's go one fifty, one fifty, one fifty, one sixty, it's not, the number's not here yet, but in the proposals, one fifty, one ninety, was it one ninety? One ninety.
Well, but one part for ninety.
One, so, now, let's just say, let's just say it's one fifty, one ninety, that makes three forty.
Are you meaning to be additional with compensation?
I'm talking about later, when we talk about.
Oh, that, yeah, that, well, the whole total for the whole.
Then you're, then you're, then you're, that's half of, that's half your support.
I also want to make a recommendation that if we don't leave funds in unrestricted going forward, so like, I I would say, yeah. I would, if you notice on that very last page, sorry to bring it back.
Seven.
Yeah, page seven, I I want to be clear that in the future, if we have great facility needs, we want to make motions for. What do you call it, it's the. No, yeah, right, but you have to put it on the ballot, what's it called? Want to say, we want to transfer, we we recommend, we would like to to move five hundred thousand, for example. Into the capital fund, and then it's reserved and it's restricted, and it cannot be touched for any other reason, but for your needs and concerns you guys all have about the building. And and it cannot be touched for any other reason, it would take a vote, again, on the, on the ballot in an article form. To to move that money out of the capital at any point, so the community would be involved.
If you do, if you look at the math, if you take the one fifty that Mike recommended from that six fifty six. And then you take out the total that we have from Brandon today, which was the two thirty two thousand total. The fund would go down to two hundred seventy four thousand roughly, so I think that's, and that's about three percent of our operating budget. For F Y twenty six.
And ironically, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the parameter, the state's gonna allow, I think they mentioned up to three percent is what you'll be allowed to have.
Is, right, what about the fifty thousand we spent last month or so, is that encumbered already, is that listed as encumbered?
Has that been spent from that fund?
No, this was as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, sorry, I I did not know.
So this, so the fund is actually, yeah, whatever, whatever that ended up being, the doors.
We didn't do all the doors.
Well, the doors, the full doors thing is in Brandon's, you have, Brandon has the full quote.
Doors, what you guys are talking about for the odd ups.
So it would be two seventy four minus whatever, that fifty thousand or whatever. So I think that's, that's, I think that's the big question, is whether we'd be okay at three percent of our operating budget for our unrestricted reserve. Or, right, I think.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. Okay, that's, that's okay.
If there were no other questions, I'm just speaking, you guys can do.
Your questions, Mike?
Just a point, I would say, like, I would, I would definitely wait on the one fifty before, or until we get the letter in December. Because we actually might be flat or lower for tax rate.
That's right.
Even if we're a little higher for budget.
It depends what the yield rate comes at.
So.
It was just an idea, depending on the yield rate.
I said, no, it's a good idea, it's a good idea to show.
Keep it in.
Well, there are, the, the likelihood that if I just get voted down again this year in mass, it's pretty likely, it's pretty likely, so we don't want, we don't want that to happen. We 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 want to, we want to be able to show that we listened to the people last year and.
We made some major cuts.
Seven jobs is the, but that's the first thing that you said.
It's about ten percent, you count special education and your staff, it's about ten percent, that's, that's big.
We're fortunate the way it worked out. So we weren't here to act on this, and we were here to talk about this and get this knowledge in our heads and then stew, and so that's where we are.
I have one other question. So I tend to look at Twinfield to compare us, because in terms of land, we're about the same size, and number of students were a little bit more, but I always am looking at their budget.
It's great, you have this guy here, he works there too.
Yes, so their transportation is at sixty seven thousand and ours is at two hundred and seven thousand. And so I'm just wondering, how are they saving so much money?
They don't have enough buses.
Yeah, we have more buses than I, I know.
They cut, they took two, they have, when I used to be there, it was, we leased four, and this year they decided to lease two, so that's fifty thousand.
And they meet in the need of their students in this, are they able to transport?
Yeah, I think they.
That's, that question's not our business.
I know, but that's.
But the other part is, one of there, because they have different start times, still, right, for elementary and secondary?
No.
They don't anymore?
They do.
They do, and so.
They only run, they only want, run one bus run, so I don't.
But that'd have been an efficient way to do it, if you have.
That's how you do save money and.
So a part of this question, a part of this question is to you, is if, you know, is that two hundred and seven thousand minus this rough sixty seven thousand? Is that what we're paying for tuition students? Is that what we're paying for tuition students to go to Lindenville and go to St. J? And that's, I guess the real.
I guess the rest of it is how much of our busing is for extraordinary needs? How much of the busing budget goes under the special education budget? But it's listed because we have some extraordinary needs students to take sp- buses.
I guess seeing transportation.
It may show up a little place.
But I think that, I think that comes through busing as well. I think you see that in the busing budget.
But I think, I think the one specific, I think, is transportation.
Yeah, we have two hundred and seven thousand as our assessment.
So 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 let's just, just because special education for extraordinary students, that's all on the special education budget, not on the transportation. Even busing.
That would not if you're in a busing budget.
Transportation services for the non-general education students is part of the special education budget. In all cases, it's almost all third party. And let me tell you, if things don't work out with this job, that's the first business I'm opening is third party transportation. You would, you don't even wanna know what we pay for. It's not even worth talking about. No, nope, nope. So I wanna address Molly's question. So when we really compare these two, so the reason why the price point is is significantly different, good question. Like you said, lease two versus lease five. Let's start with that. That's three buses leased at twenty seven thousand dollars a year. There's sixty thousand right there. That's number one, not counting the fuel and insurance and everything else that gets added on top of that. And then the driver, the driver phenomenon, which you're probably not aware of. We have separate drivers. That's what they do. It's all they do.
And he contracted out.
No, employees.
Just specifically their own.
That's not all they do, but that's all they do.
In many cases.
That's no, in Danville.
In Danville.
In Danville, at least two of them work a separate contract inside the building.
Fine, two of the five.
Yeah.
The other three, they drive buses. That's what they do. These guys from Twinfield, fine, but they're they're full time employees. They do, they're contracted, but they're also custodial professionals. And and plant operations people. So they have a combination of of employees, which allows, I think, a a different um. Approach to solving that equation. I don't know if there's real savings in it, because to your point, if if the bus drivers at Danville are also having. Power professional or other types of of food service, whatever else they're doing on top of driving. That's how you get more uh maybe savings that way. I don't know. I will say this, the last piece of the element is they actually own two buses that he didn't address. One, they've owned since twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. They bought it outright, so there's no lease cost there. It's fully paid for and we used unrestricted surplus to pay that loan off early, otherwise we'd still be paying on it. And then lastly, we got grant, they got a grant from the EPA for four hundred thousand to buy an electric bus. So again, when your buses are paid for, it's helpful. So i- it's it's just a different dynamic and it's it's just a different, it's tough to person to make.
You can't put chains on the buses.
Yeah, you can't, but but hold on.
So, but we do, I think we do make, I think we do make more buses. We have more buses, we have more drivers. We make more trips and we spend more money on sports buses.
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, we talk a lot about using that, it seems like recruiting tuition students is our sole. Sustainable solution at this point, it sounds like. And so I guess, looking at the real cost of what a tuition student costs, instead of just what we're getting in the door for what's allowed. Um, you know, we have our building, we have our, I mean, transportation is expensive and could we go down a driver if we didn't offer that? I don't wanna be a jerk, but I guess I'm like, you know, is that possible?
We couldn't go down, we couldn't go down below four routes and not have kids that sit on the buses for over an hour. That are already on our buses.
I think the reason that we run eight, that we run four buses generally in Danville is because we have eighty seven miles of dirt roads.
Yes.
And I, it tends to be an equity, that's where the like famously the 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 big, the dirt roadiest town in the, in all of Vermont. And we have all these. Yeah, it's that's completely, we've all, I think.
That should be on a sign.
So when when Danville exists.
I get it, I get it. It's just a question. I I don't want us to keep saying, we get all these tuition kids, we get all these tuition kids, this is great. If there's a big cost that comes with them as well, um, and when they're a third of our population in the, in seven through twelve, I believe, you know. So I think it's just making sure we're 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 being mindful of.
And I appreciate you asking those questions. It's good for me to hear the responses and answers as well.
Yeah.
So like how the two hundred and seven thousand dollar difference bumps up against a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue?
Right, like how do we, you know, we bring in, say, the tuition students pay for six teachers. You know, there's other cost, there's other costs that we're incurring that aren't included in that tuition that we get from other towns.
But are you a professional for tuition in students that we're running special routes for them? Is that what you're saying?
We are, we are, yeah.
We are.
I think it's gotten better, but there was a time where people were seeing our bus in Concord and and then they tell us when they see the bus everywhere else. So I think.
On on Concord, it was, um, it was understood that if we got this number of students, that we'd be able to provide a bus.
There's a limit.
Because then you're still, you know, it's gonna pay for itself. We were getting more at the time. No clue what the numbers are now, but.
Yeah, there are two stops in St. J and I believe one in London.
Yeah, and so maybe it's gotten better.
It picked up some half a dozen kids, some dozen kids, when the Concord School closed, when they, before Act Forty Six happened. And they they tried to be, they tried to please all parties and ended up closing our high school and some kids wanted the small school experience. And so for several years, Danville sent a bus over there to get the kids. And then one of the um private schools found out, started sending a bus themselves. And snapped up all those kids.
Yeah, so private schools weren't busing kids at all.
Right.
Previously.
Yeah.
It's on, that's a very new thing.
I got a bus and.
I literally just talked to eight teenagers at the St. J school today and one of their questions was, well, the academy is closed, what about you guys? And I was like, we offer transportation. And I think that matters. I would, I would be very hesitant to cut that. Part of a route, because that's all it would be. I think. Yeah, that's not gonna save us, but it's actually one.
Agreed.
For us.
Compared to this re-tuition, yeah.
Well, I guess, could we find out? How many miles we go past the last stop of the Danville kid on the loop? And then sort of extrapolate the mileage, just to sort of have to have an answer to this question.
I guess, what's our, what does it cost per tuition kid for real? Not just what's allowed, you know, including transportation, because I think that's an important part. Um, important, important part of the equa- equation of. You know, we're spinning our wheels, poor Natalie's out there beating down the doors, trying to get kids here. It's like, is this sustainable? How many kids are we really looking at? And enrollment's declining.
I don't think we're increasing, you know, we haven't had hire more teachers, I don't think. Based on the number of our tuition kids that are coming in. So, you know, that's kind of. So it's gonna be that that variable cost, as you say, but we can't cut back on the buses, so. It'd be important for us, Michael, to to look at, is there something else there besides if we're not increasing teachers? And we already gotta keep the same number of buses. Is there some other variable cost there that we should be looking at that?
We always, we always, we always parse it, that what we're doing by taking in tuition students is simply building empty seats. Yep. And so, but is there a way that we can better quantify what we're doing to satisfy the questions of the public? Who wanna know, are you really spinning your wheels financially, just pretending to, you know, to to make, to make revenue on this?
The public's hearing that residents are leaving and we're recruiting tuition students that aren't from Danville. So that, I think, that's challenging.
Sure, it's a lot, a lot, when when the residents leave, a lot of people wonder why they're leaving and then.
And they hear the board just saying, let's keep recruiting more.
We're not kicking them out of that seat.
Yeah, no, I know.
They're they're taking their kid and saying, and we're saying, we got an empty seat, we gotta fill it.
And this is to your ear- earlier point, when a person decides that they're gonna live in Danville, pay taxes in Danville to Montpelier based on Danville's tax rate. And they don't send their children to the school, that kid vaults all the way out of the education spending.
Right.
Completely, and they pay private school money and that money doesn't go anywhere.
Right.
But it ends up, it ends up in the, in the Jeddah funding.
A huge hole and I, you know.
I I I absolutely agree. And I think, you know, we can address it. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a large number, especially if it's, like, in this example. Stopping by, you know, St. John'sbury, going an extra five to ten miles, so in totality, both ways, in the morning and in in the afternoon. Even if you put a multiplier of a dollar a mile, we're talking about fifty dollars a week.
Right.
It's 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 not making it dense, is what I'm saying, but we can look into it if it's something that's, if it's something that important to answer to the public. We can quantify that it's an extra thousand dollars to.
You know, it's minimal, but we just say that.
I I can look into it.
But if somebody, somebody tells you that you saw a bus in Concord, you could. It might have been field trip.
Yeah, right.
And we send a lot of kids on a lot of field trips. My, I think my, I think one of my.
Everybody goes to.
Yeah, everybody goes. Well, I I think my, I think my kid was on, my kid was on a bus last week, two, two or three days, like just in the middle of the day. In Lake Maury and he was in somewhere, he was like, there's a great pizza place that I went to somewhere and I was aware, he's, I don't know, on a bus. They might have, I think they went to Stowe, like.
I love it.
So it's high school kids, uh, having adventures. So sometimes they see a bus and they say, what's the bus doing over here? And it's taking kids on.
Because one of our goals at high school is to get kids out of Danville.
Yeah.
And out of the NEK a little bit and get them exposure. So if folks are seeing buses around, please have them come ask me. Because I have.
Twinfield was the one rotating around.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, honestly, because we are, we literally took kids to Stowe for a play the other week. And so we are, we go places.
All right, so the budget, back to the budget. Are we back? Are we done with the budget for tonight?
Uh, one last question, does this include the same uh support staff assumptions as last year?
Not not counting the. Just outside of that.
The contracts.
Yeah, the only three FTEs were down locally, are those three we talked about, and then four point seven at the SE level. I I mean, technically, there there is one other piece, sorry.
All right.
Thanks, Coach.
FY FY twenty six budget talk is over. Again, we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait for what the state tells us and I, who knows how hard they're gonna lean. But if we can show, if we can show this, that'd be great. It'd be great for the town.
Yeah.
Be great to show people. All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Um, if if, do you need me or may I be excused?
Please feel, feel free to go. I would stay, if if they didn't make me stay, I wouldn't stay.
You like the three hours.
You you told me three hours, that's that's you're getting.
Save yourself, Mike. All right. So where we're gonna go now is we're gonna look at some plumbing estimates for facilities, heat control and shut off valves for plumbing. I have all these on the agenda, all your various things. I think I got all of the specific words that need to be said, so that we can open this conversation to all these things. So, um. What we wanna look at here is a bunch. Can you put those up?
Which is what's my looking at? I'm sorry. I gotta go get.
Back on, just just a packet.
It's at the end of the.
You can't, I can, I can crib, I can crib off.
Crib right now, because I have to find it.
So.
I've got all kinds of stuff, but not that one. I've got the budget, I've got the C I D.
Yeah, just in the packet.
I bet I can get it. I got the folder.
There's no rush, it's just a small.
So what's it say? Is it bid? Does it just say bid five two five?
Is it TCV? Where do you wanna start? TC, where do you wanna start? TCV made a bid for temperature controls of Vermont.
You can show me which one it is, buddy, you all pull it up. Well, yeah, but as I say, TCV aren't actually.
Yes.
It does. No, not on the the file.
Oh, no, it just, I was, I thought you just pulled up the packet off.
The board packet.
In your email. Okay, it's all we ever do is open emails from Katie.
Sorry, I just go to the actual file. Oh, I bet I can find it now.
So I can go by an excuse, but we'll put it up for anybody that's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it. I'm there, getting there. Sorry, guys.
Obviously, I haven't really been here long enough in the winter, but it has been brought to my attention that rooms are overheated. In some parts of the building and underheated in other parts. Um, and it sounds like that is probably due to faulty valves, thermostats.
If you walk through an elementary classroom, in one of these hallways, they have the windows open and the heat blaring. And it's both hot and cold simultaneously. If you close the windows, then it's both hot and hot simultaneously. And every single person, every single teacher that you see is sweating and they will tell you why they're sweating. And it's been happening for.
Longer than I've been.
A decade, a decade I've been hearing the same, the same thing. It's justified.
By doing that, does it draw heat to? The the area of the rooms that are pushing heat out the window?
Of course, yeah.
So if the window was closed, you wouldn't ask for more.
Yeah, but people would be overheated and dropping. That might be part of the problem, is that the thousands are like.
Right.
Unfunctional now.
There's no way to control it.
Yeah, they don't shut off and probably some.
So it's either hot or really, really hot.
And and the other downfall with that is if you have rooms that are overheating and using all of, wasting all of that heat that's not needed. It's taking away from rooms that could use more. So you're like kinda doing full birds here with. On stone, so the rooms will be, that are overheating with this, the new valves and controls, would be satisfied. And it would stop calling for heat and taking away the, you know, the the other part of the heat and then it could go to other rooms and. You know, just be everywhere to be satisfied. Uh, I worked with TCV at Twinfield when I used to be there and we have the same thing. There's a, I can bring up a map on my computer and I can see every classroom, what the temperature is. Make all, like if certain teachers want it warmer, you can go on and make the settings for what set point you want and each, each individual room.
Can you have alarms if temperatures start to go down in certain rooms, things of that nature as well?
Yeah, there. There's a lot of alarms, so.
I just made sure.
Yes, it will send alarms, but it's one of those things that if it drops one degree below, it sends an alarm, so it's kinda.
Yeah, but then you still at least be able to open up your computer and take a look at it. Yeah, I'd much rather have that.
And like every morning, I get, I get on it from here, I can look at Twinfields right now. And each morning, if I'm not there, I just hop on it real quick, just to take a peek. And then if all the rooms are green or green and yellow.
You're not flying eighty miles an hour.
Yeah, they're they're red, I click on it and maybe it's two degrees cooler, but it's at least there and you can see it. And so the hundred ninety thousand also goes along with the. Eighteen thousand four fifty four for VHB, because TCV is like the control side of it. And they supply all of the valves, but VHB will be the ones that actually cut the the heat pipes open and. You know, solder in the new valve. So they would do the valve replacement, but TCV supplies everything and does all the controls. They would supply new thermostats in each room. There, they're normally just a blank plate, so teachers don't see and can't adjust them, because that can kind of get out of hand. I dealt with that at Twinfield. It's not really a road to go down, um, but the thermostats, blank plate, and that's what also brings the temperature. Like I said, I would have control on. It can be, like I can be at home and when it's all set up and be able to log in and. See what's going on with each room. That is what that is all about.
I know you've got, had good experience with TCV. Have you thought about working with any other?
Well, yeah, so I I talked to Sarah about this and it sounds like, obviously, if it's over, I think it's forty or fifty thousand dollars, you have to get more estimates. But I didn't wanna waste a bunch of time and sometimes these are kinda hard to get, so I wanted to, you know, feel more, get a room.
Ballpark of.
Yeah, like, is this something we definitely wanna do? And then I'll reach out, like Alliance is doing.
That's what I was thinking.
Right now. Yeah, if you make an attempt to get three, right, even if you can't, sort of get them.
Right, that was a good plan, just to say, hey, here's the struggle.
Yeah, I know, I don't have all the time in the world and I don't wanna, if it's something that's like, no, we don't wanna do that, then why would I waste hours doing three quotes?
Good plan.
This is a pretty comparable vote to the one that Sean had thrown out a couple of years ago, too. It's about the same amount of.
Which is great with the recent inflation.
Well, it did go up a decent amount, because it was, I think, sixty thousand and that's the same two or three years ago. Sixty thousand.
I see one ninety, you said sixty, so I'm.
I think the original.
Oh, increase of sixty.
No.
Costs.
Yeah. I understand.
Are there larger pumps that are gonna go on here? So so the the valves are gonna restrict. Uh, you're gonna restrict it, but but pumps will actually push more. The, is it all about thing, or are you gonna get uh pumps that'll actually push um hot water to this side where it's cold?
Realistically, you were, you you could probably, I mean, you wouldn't, but I think you could say that you would use less pump. Because certain rooms are gonna be closing and then the water flow is gonna continue by that and not have to run through it. So I, I don't think, yeah, I don't think a a pump problem, I don't think that would be an issue. And from what I've seen, a lot of the pumps, it looks like those have been pretty, or redone or replaced recently. Because there's some front boxes that are a newer style and.
So it's not like you have so many zones, this is gonna be for every room?
Each room, each room has its own valve, like in behind the baseboard, you know, there's a little orange valve, plastic box valve thing.
So you do have so many zones.
Yeah, it's really fantastic as a teacher to.
Yeah, it's really fantastic as a teacher to have that level of control of your space, right?
So given what we know here, the question into the board is. Would you like rated to pursue this avenue to find some more bids to get us legal to find out if this is something that we wanna go?
Yeah.
As a good expenditure of money to to then save oil and.
Well, yeah, that's, you're gonna stop overheating and potentially you're gonna, I would think you would say so, maybe not. Because you're gonna start sending some other heat to rooms that are cold, but either way, it's gonna be more comfortable for students and teachers and. It's a better environment.
So to do this, you have to see, seek additional bids and you can bring it back to us maybe in December. No idea yet when you get, when this work could get done, obviously.
They asked me and I just said I would guess over the summer. I mean, it kinda can't be.
My guess, right, yeah.
Well, not only that, but they are disruptive.
Yeah, but this is not, this is, this is not a spring, this is not a winter break, sort of a gig. This is, this is, this is gonna be weeks.
Yeah.
It would be.
Yeah, well, Alliance has been a cadet since I started.
So with the service that we have, as we were talking about, this seems like a good course of action.
Let's get more estimates.
So if you would, we're not gonna take any action this tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to.
Bring us some more estimates and this is, this is something that that we've really interested in. I'm spending some of our circle time.
Next page, what would you guys like?
Some of this, this is something we talked about. Bathroom partitions, we've talked about, shop heater, we haven't talked about, but shop heater makes sense as part of, and then hallway doors we talked about. So let's go to shop heater next, we haven't spoken about that one.
Yeah, so currently there is a tube, I don't know, it's a propane style tube heater. It's like when you walk into Home Depot and it blasts heat on your face. And that's what they have, like from my understanding, talking with Zach is they they crank it, it's on or off, there's no regulating it. Very inefficient, it's probably like the least efficient type of heat. Yeah, and it sounds like kids, they turn it on to warm it up and then kids can't work at tables, cause it's, you know, right there. So it's a, one of them is broken and the other one is running, but it sounds like it's on or off and they. Don't like it in there and it's definitely very inefficient. So this is just an estimate to install a molding here in the corner that actually would have fans and a thermostat. Yeah, so and it'll circulate air rather than blasting it straight down and.
And then only take out the one that's broken.
Right, we could still leave the one in there as. Just be, yeah, I mean, there's, it's not hurting anything up in the ceiling, the other one that's broken is on this quote to remove. Yeah, it's just the same thing, it's gonna be a much nicer area to work in. That's something that we wanted to do.
Can you use like a radiator system? It is part of. With your valves and stuff like that, use radiator system and then have a a fan going on, on and off. Behind that blowing heat in or not.
Find the current one.
You mean like a wall, like baseboard?
So so like a radiator, okay, and then your valves to send hot water through or not. And when that valve is on, you blow the air up through the coils out into the shop.
That's what a, that's what a molding heater basically does, yeah.
And can you do it with the hot water that we have?
There isn't.
Instead of.
There isn't hot water heat in that.
Right. It would all have to be piped, you know, piped in as part of a a project. Is that something that?
I'm sure it could be done, it would just be, probably a lot more expensive than.
Okay.
Yeah.
The the shop is a utilized space most of the.
Yeah, all day.
All day.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, this one, it's also, it's also the art room. It's it's the one that kill it.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we authorize the spending of nine thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars.
This is from unrestricted, you're making this motion?
From unrestricted funds.
From unrestricted funds. For the purpose of.
Heating the shop.
Heating the shop.
And removing the old heater.
I have a motion. Nine one two five. Regarding the shop, I have a second for the molding heater and the replacement as an improvement to the building in the shop. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion for nine one two five to replace, to to install a molding heater in the shop, please say aye. I think the, I don't think so.
Do we know what timing is for that?
Uh, no, because I I don't think it, I hope it wouldn't be too far out, but I would.
This one seems a little less.
Just smaller, yeah, a little.
Yeah.
Small project. They go up pretty quick, they go, they go up in a week if somebody's here to put them off.
Yeah, like anything, though, everyone is busy. It's like impossible to get contractors to.
Sure.
We keep having weather like we do and we don't need it this year.
So either show us your bathroom partitions or hallway doors, we talked about both of them.
What's the next one in the package?
Yeah, what is that for? That's for new bathroom partitions for the gym lobby area.
Less expensive than I thought.
Way less.
That's also, that's that's me installing.
I was gonna say, that's just buying.
Install.
Yeah, and and privacy is a thing. So I'd like to make a motion that we spend up to five thousand eight hundred and fifty. I'm gonna round.
Up to five thousand nine hundred.
Up to five thousand nine hundred dollars on bathroom partitions.
Some emotion, I have a second for Molly, uh motions from Tim, second from Molly to approve the purchase of um from unrestricted. Of that, for the purchase of bathroom partition. Any further discussion? Five nine hundred.
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor of the five nine hundred, please say aye.
Aye.
That won't care. Alright, and now the last one here is hallway doors. And again, we discussed this at length.
So we discussed it, like, and we really wanted to know what Brandon's thought was.
And I wasn't capable of remembering.
What he, what he told us, what what he told us in his report is one thing we didn't know. And that's that somebody already tried to do the workaround fix. Somebody already monkeyed with him and said, now they're fixed, they'll never bother you again. I did it.
There's like plates welded on one side to the frame. So I I actually have the guy over here for another thing and I talked to him more about it. And yes, you could get away with the the cheap fix. And I think it would be okay. The problem is that the hardware that is currently on those doors, I don't know if any of you have tried to use it. But the, I think one of them, the door handle is just like.
That was, that was what they brought us, is the door handle doesn't work. And then the doors open back the wrong way.
Right, so that's, yeah. And I know it's expensive, but half of the expensive quote is new hardware. So why, why not? Why would you spend twenty two hundred on just the door and then we're going to need new hardware anyways? Which I cannot believe how expensive it is, but it is. So for the, not a whole lot more, I think it is the smart decision to do. A hole there out and replace with new doors and hardware.
That's eighty eight hundred quote. To spend eighty twenty one seventy four.
So I have a, I have a motion for um security doors in the high school hallway, eighty eight twenty one, not eighty twenty one, something. Maybe not to exceed eighty fifty.
Maybe not, yeah, not to exceed eighty fifty.
For hallway doors in the high school hallway, I have a motion on the table from Eric. Have a second as well, alright. Any further discussion? This one's not branded installed, right? This is professionally installed. Yeah, this is, this one, this this one's with an installer. And so this one, this one, again, when it's somebody else installing, then you're at the mercy of when that person's available to install it. But this one can be done in a shorter amount of time, it'll be worth. For how much? Alright, so the motion on the table, did somebody second it? Alright.
You're writing the notes, you can write whatever you want.
We're not to eighty eighty eight fifty for these hallway doors. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
So we're at six fifteen, by the way, for just back in the napkin, where that local fund stands.
So the unrestricted, just from today?
If we do.
From seventeen from last month and then the eighteen plus six twenty four from today.
And like three forty is the number that we're dangling for the two, the two actions, the one ninety and the one fifty.
Yeah.
So we're gonna keep three forty in our mind, waiting on, seeing what's gonna happen.
That's a, that's a big wait and see type of thing, but yeah. So, but we're, we're at six fifteen, just as a.
Six hundred fifteen.
If we do all of them in the packet, cost the seventeen thousand, that it's like two sixty-ish. Two fifty five, two sixty left in the reserves.
Right.
Unrestricted fund.
And then.
And everything in the packet.
If 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 that's the case, then we can add on to the, you know, we can, we can put that in the warning and we can move some of that money to capital reserve. Which is, you know, we can spend from the capital reserve.
Yep.
Cause this is, this could all be spent from the capital reserve right now if we needed to.
Right, we do have some in there, don't we?
We already did it from this, because we have this extra, we can, we can move it over. I mean, we can't make a motion to move it over on our own, we have to account to move it.
Yeah, I I think you've made the right choice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the capital plan can just sit there with money and it's, and like, if my suspicion is correct, and I'm not sure it is, then it's, that money's safer.
It is, that's what we anticipate.
Right. Right, that makes sense, okay.
Alright, so where that puts us is that, 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 and that, we're done. And now I'm down to retiring some key items. And this, this. This is some various items in the building that have outlived their useful lives, and this is not the first time we've heard this about items in this building. But some of this stuff can be moved. About. Probably four years ago, we had some older things in the shop that also needed to be moved out and they moved out. Without any great. Without any great, there was a little bit of townwide drama, but not too much townwide drama. And um. So hopefully.
Yeah, so let's start.
Key insights here.
Okay, so um in the weight room specifically, we have some treadmills that are. Past their life, so they were donated or I had used, maybe purchased them used initially, or they were.
Some were donated, I think, I I I think a local physical therapy joint might have donated some of the equipment.
I think so too. Um, absolutely, the computers aren't working on them. Sometimes the tread is that kind of, like, they're just, we have budgeted with um local P E budget. And some of athletics budget to replace treadmills. And so we wanna get rid of the broken, unsafe ones.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, so there's treadmills, um, there's a bike, there's an elliptical and there's a stuffer. That the P E teacher has deemed either broken or unsafe for use and would like to remove those. We're not necessarily replacing, other than treadmills, we're not replacing anything.
And so I don't know if you, just the P E teacher, she worked in a college weight room as recently as last year.
Yeah, so last.
So she has a lot of experience with looking at equipment, like she, this is not, she's just not walking into a new place and saying, I need more space to sit.
Yeah, and the preacher bench as well, she just said it's unnecessary to take me up space and it's not a useful piece of gym equipment. Yeah, so she would like to retire those items. Zach Baker has a list of items, which I'm not going to pretend to fully understand what all of them do. But that's why there's descriptions in paragraph form under most of them. There's a Rockwell Delta lathe he would like to retire. He finds it to be too dangerous to be in the shop and antiquated. So CNC machines have replaced this. A hypotherm plasma cutter, we've already replaced it. Hypotherm told him that this is an old model that's no longer produced and has an internal electrical problem. There's a Delta scroll saw, it has a broken holding jaw, it's not available, and it would have to be custom machined. That seems not worth uh replacing. And we've already replaced it with new equipment. Um, there's a spot welder, which is beyond obsolete, according to Mister Baker, and we don't have a metal brake or any sheet metal tools to go along with it. So again, just something um that we don't need any longer and apparently something we can use our mid welder for. And the stick welder is enormous, old school and a little dangerous. So Mister Baker thinks it's a little dangerous, I would like to not have it anymore. Um, we also have three stick welders, so. Those items are, those two teachers have brought to my attention as unsafe, unnecessary, and they would like to remove them from the school. I don't know that we would, initially we were thinking, oh, could we put them up on Facebook Marketplace or something and get a few dollars for them? I don't think anything out of the shop. Necessarily would be worth it, possibly the lathe for someone who's, who's into that, um, if we could find the right buyer for that. So I'm not opposed to attempting to sell any of them to gain some revenue.
So what I think that, what worked the last time was, you don't post them on Facebook Marketplace, you post them locally on the school's Facebook page. They would like to retire this piece of equipment. And then maybe that person who would take it could give an in-kind donation to the booster club. Who's donating money for the, for the, for the new equipment and say, do we replace some equipment there? Maybe an in-kind donation might work.
That's lovely.
And then you, and then the rest of it might be a scrap rock. Sounds like that's a much of scrap.
Good thing Brandon's not here, otherwise we would have told just to throw him back in the truck and go. I'll do it.
I'd love your permission for us to retire those and then the ones that are safe and appropriate to.
The treadmills don't work?
Um, I I think they are less than functional. We fixed them multiple times last year, which cost us hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
Stop.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It costs us three hundred dollars, I think, just to have the technician come out and look at them.
Yeah, sure.
Does anybody have any special attachments to any of these things? If if it's only, if it's only an old lathe, um, you know, that's the one thing that you, you can maybe try to move. That way, but otherwise you can hold off and just get that.
It's not a CNC lathe, right?
No, it's, this is one of those ones where you make baseball bats. Where you hold up, where you take a piece of maple and you hold, you're an old man and you hold the thing, hold a spike to it and then you hope you don't break your hand.
Those are, those are.
Those are the ones you make TikTok videos with.
Yep.
You're right, maybe there will be a buyer.
There will be a buyer.
You should label it as a TikTok lathe.
TikTok lathe.
So I, I mean. This may be a Brandon problem, we could maybe have a workaround on that as well, if we can figure something out. But it sounds like, there's one thing that we could say that we're retiring some things.
Yes.
And. I have no problem with that. You have any problems?
I'm sure that someone will come pick up the the scraps up, so we haven't got to transport it.
Well, I mean, there's.
So do we have to like, make a motion to let them?
I, to retire the items. I think, I think, I think that we wanted from, from minimum. Make a motion to retire these items.
To retire the items as listed in this principal's report.
I will suck it. I have a motion to retire the items listed in the principal's report.
There's a list of all the items?
Yeah, yeah, page twelve. I have a second for that motion to retire these items as listed in the principal's report. Any further questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Alright, so that's that, we can get, we can get moving on that. Um, status, we did that one already. What I'm down to now is public input. Hey, the public, how's it going? Do you have any input? Future agenda items, we're gonna have the budget again, obviously. We, we're gonna have some additional. Quotes for um heat.
Yep.
We're gonna have Des back with some more data from this continuous improvement plan. Uh, are we gonna have an update, anything else? I don't remember the timer, is that enough?
Maybe negotiations update.
I may, I.
I just said maybe. No, it's not supposed to start till the summer.
Well, the other one, the fact finding, it's possible the fact finder might have some. Well, the other one, the fact finding, it's possible the fact finder might have some, some information.
It's probably, we're early in the month, so it may.
I think that we, we keep, I I think that the negotiate, the negotiations council would keep that.
True. Nope, I've just let you know.
For potentially negotiations update.
Where are we at with the building advisory committee? Does that just on hold? Did we tell them we're not meeting anymore? It's kind of closed.
We told them, we told them at the meeting that we had, that weren't, that that there's no need for work for the meetings.
So it's done. They know that. They're aware.
All of them except for one.
Are they aware? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, that one, okay, I don't remember seeing it, okay.
All of them except for one.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Will we be taking a break or do we actually officially?
Uh, what, what we, what we told them then was that, that because the law has now changed and it would be punitive to
Right.
To do anything, there's no reason to change it.
Should we give them an update that we're moving on some things, just to say FYI, are we just going to say, hey, we're right now or?
Might be, might be good to have a courtesy email of like, hey, we're, we're discussing, we're getting more quotes on these building, on these plumbing controls. Because they have true interest.
Yeah, they've put in time and, yeah. You can send them the minutes and they can read it in the minutes.
All right, I will do that. And I'll send that note out to them.
Over tomorrow.
Meeting.
And then what that puts us now, next meeting date is whatever the first Tuesday is. December three. Oh, did anybody want to be added on to that community, community committee?
Oh, November twentieth strategic design.
November twentieth strategic design.
You got the monopoly going.
It's catered, it's going to be.
It is catered.
Nearly sixty percent students. Anybody, any takers? Sixteen percent students. I mean, so. Hearing none, okay. So where we are now at seven fifty-six, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn, Dave.
Oh, I'll second it.
I have a second. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody. I thought we were going to be able to nine thirty.
I did too.